Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, February 25th, 2025, meeting of the Long Meadow School Committee. School committees and other public bodies may continue to hold remote meetings through March 31st, 2025, under legislation enacted on March 29th, 2023. The statute, Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, extends quorum reductions for remote meetings. All votes while there is remote participation must be made by roll call vote. This meeting is being recorded and aired live by LCTV, and we will begin with the pledge of allegiance.
(Clerk) Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
We'll begin with correspondence.
She's not talking. You want me to do it?
Yes, please.
Okay. So, a memo from Mr. Donald Jarvis, Director of Occupational Education at the Lower Pioneer Valley Career and Technical Education Center regarding the Walter E. Quigley Jr., Student of the Month Award for January 2025. Long Meadow students honored this month are Nathaniel Vincent, Automotive Technology One, Aiden Julian Rodriguez, Graphic and Visual Design One. That's it.
That's it.
Okay.
All right. Great. Congratulations. Thank you. Moving into approval of minutes, we have a recommended motion.
I move that the school committee approve the minutes to the February 11th, 2025, school committee as presented.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
That motion should be seconded.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to vote. Jamie?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
And yes for me as well. All right. That brings us to public speak. If there's any member of the public. We don't have any here, but we do have some at home. If anyone would like to speak, now's a great time. Feel free to unmute or raise a hand if that's not an option. All right. Seeing no public comments, we'll move on to school committee announcements and recognitions. Any announcements or recognitions from anyone on the committee? Okay. We are headed into administrative reports. School committee chair report, start by welcoming everyone back from February break. We hope that you all had a restful and lovely break, got a chance to do some fun things with family and friends. Moving into some upcoming agenda items, a reminder about our budget meeting upcoming with the select board, that is rescheduled now to Monday, March 10th at 7:00 PM, so make sure that's on your calendars correctly, Monday, March 10th. If any of the committee members are planning to attend, please let me know so that we can post the meeting if needed. If we have enough members, we'll need to post for a quorum. Also, a welcome to our incoming ninth graders who visited LHS earlier today. Appreciate the faculty and staff who took the time and energy to coordinate the visit and who are working to welcome families, parents, and guardians to the upcoming informational evening on Thursday evening. So, welcome to the high school. And lastly, the town of Long Meadow is hosting a cover art contest for this year's annual town report, so if there are any students or other community members who are interested in participating in that, you can find more information about the contest and details on how to submit an original drawing or paint photo on the Long Meadow Town website. And that is all I have. We'll move on to you, superintendent.
Sure. You mentioned the incoming ninth graders joining us here at Long Meadow High, so we're also preparing to welcome our incoming kindergarteners. So, K screening will happen on May 13th and 14th, and so we assemble some of our K teachers, some of our special education staff to conduct the screening. It's a great way to welcome our kindergarteners. It's always a fun day to see them in the office here. We have eighth grade parent night on Thursday night, so again, part of our efforts to prepare our rising ninth graders for their academic choices for next year. So, that's Thursday night. Next Tuesday, Mr. Capitaz, our athletic director, will host a meeting of the spring booster clubs, so I'll attend that if I'm available. And then, the following Thursday, LHS Parent Teacher Night. And then, March 12th, we have Community Strings here at the high school and the gymnasium. So, lots going on in the world of special education. I should note that we are undergoing a DESI Integrated Program Monitoring Review, so that's will happen throughout the month of March. We'll put families in the community on notice on that and be sure to keep the committee updated on that, but it's a chance for DESI to come in and sort of look at our practices around IEP development, screening, and evaluation, and timeline adherence, all those things. So, Nicole Paris-Crowe is leading that effort, and it's a heavy lift, but it's a good opportunity for us to sort of hold a mirror up to our practices and make sure that we're meeting all the requirements. So, we'll keep you up to date on that.
All right. Great.
That's it.
Student representative, Andrew.
So, just to add to more about the family night on Thursday, student council will have student leaders present to help introduce like families to the variety of programs and activities we have for students to help them be more informed of the different options that ninth graders will have next year to get involved. And then, seniors will present the senior class play of Frozen Junior on March 13th, 14th, and 15th. I believe that's Thursday, Friday, Saturday. And then, good luck to girls' basketball who compete tonight in an MIA preliminary game. Girls' ice hockey will travel to Auburn tomorrow for the round of 32, and boys' basketball will have the round of 32 on Thursday. And then, just a reminder, the deadline for spring sports registration is March 5th.
All right. Great. Thank you. Any other reports? LPVC, we do not, actually, Adam, is there anything from LPVC on your side?
Just following up from that January 29th email, we are still waiting to hear from Phyllis, just with Dr. O'Shea's communication on that. So, I haven't signed anything. It looks like the representative from East Long Meadow also has not signed anything, I think, for the last two holdouts. So, just once they get that clearance, I can sign that or not sign that. That's up to you guys.
Yeah, we did check in. I think that, Adam will connect offline on that, but that's ready to go for your signature.
Oh, it is. All right. Perfect. Well done.
All right. Great seal. Michaela?
Yes. A very important meeting coming up on March 12th. It's going to be a presentation on the special education budget for the upcoming fiscal year with the Director of Special Education, Nicole Paris-Crowe, who never misses a meeting, and Thomas Mazza, the Assistant Superintendent, and we'll be talking about financial planning and allocation for special ed services.
All right. Wonderful. Thank you. That sounds good. And no report right now from Energy and Sustainability. That brings us to ongoing business, which is our middle school building project update. Do we have anything else?
Sure. Actually, if it's okay, I'll just share quickly just a few slides from the last building committee meeting, just to give the committee some sense of what we've been working on and the community as well. So, I won't go full screen because that hides everybody. So, the schematic design continues. It's a very intensive project. We hope to have the schematic design completed with JWA, our designers, by the spring. We continue to refine the floor plan in the interior spaces, and so we're really pleased with the way it is taking shape. This is sort of the north-south orientation, and you'll recall that it is organized in neighborhoods. So, what you're looking at here, that I'm sort of circling up the south side of the building, is the sixth grade teams. There would be two teams of sixth grade students that would be housed on that first floor. Also on the first floor would be one of the eighth grade teams, and the other eighth grade team would be on the second floor. So, some of our eighth graders will be moving from floor to floor. Seventh grade organized in two separate teams here on the second floor on the south side of the building as well. And so, we're excited with the way it is taking shape. We're especially excited by the sort of space here in the middle of the building, which includes the digital lab, the media center, the STEM spaces, the art spaces, and then a little further up the hallway, the music and PE spaces. So, really, you know, really robust, strong, spacious areas for students to engage in those sort of creative arts and performing arts and physical education. And then, again, the sort of the top of the building, the sort of the wellness area of the building with the gymnasium, a high school-sized court, an alternative PE space that can sort of be multi-purpose physical education space. And then, health classrooms are located in an adjacent area as well. Really pleased with the amount of space that we have set aside for the performing arts, strings, band, chorus, and then even some allowances for the growing dramatic arts program at the middle school level as well. So, these spaces continue to be defined and refined, and we've been meeting with the architects regularly to take a look at those spaces. I should also note here, up on the second floor, is, in the red here, is sort of a guidance suite that includes an SEL room, and it's also adjacent to the math lab and the lit lab. Those are two intervention spaces. So, we're really pleased that there's sort of this counseling suite that we have set up, and then you'll notice also, up on the second floor, the science labs that are very spacious as well. It will be a welcome adjustment to move from cramped science labs at Williams and Glenbrook to the more spacious science labs of the new middle school. So, lots happening in the, I'm a bit colorblind, so is that orange or salmon color there? Are the special education spaces, and so we're really pleased with, Nicole Paris-Crowe has been working closely with JWA to make sure that we have appropriate space allocated to serve special education students, and they're spread throughout the building in a very inclusive way. So, these spaces continue to get refined and defined, and we'll keep you up to speed. This is a quick overview of the site. We continue to work through that, and as recently as today, we met with the designers and representatives from police and fire to look at the overall site, but also to think about some of the security requirements that we'll need. Mr. Mazza and I have sort of stressed to the design team that we want an appealing campus, but one that is manageable for current and future DPW staff. So, you'll see that there's some cool outdoor learning spaces here, adjacent to the field, some great recess space, dedicated recess space, which currently Glenbrook and Williams don't really have in a way that's kind of tied to the building. So, we're excited about that. And then, in here, you'll see, and again, this is all just sort of conceptual at this point, but you'll see a variety of paths and learning spaces that the middle school students can access as well. We want to make sure that this space serves student learning and creates some engagement with the outdoors, but we also want it to be manageable for our buildings and grounds team. So, some really exciting discussions about the exterior spaces, and we'll continue to work on that. They also floated, sort of, they're at the early stages of trying to get some inspiration for the color schemes. No decisions were made, but they introduced sort of, they asked the building committee to consider whether or not they should lean towards sort of these, what they call timeless warm color schemes or the modern cool color schemes. So, no decisions, but some interesting discussion by the building committee about how those color schemes could be repeated and integrated throughout the building. And then, finally, the building committee had some great conversation about the potential to include synthetic turf on the site, and there was some review of the costs associated with that. I think there is a, certainly among park and rec coaches and our own coaches, there's some strong interest in synthetic turf to create a space that is usable throughout the year by multiple teams. The current Williams campus gets a lot of use, and certainly, synthetic turf would create, open up some options for youth and school athletic teams. So, those are some of the things that we're sort of have been occupying the building committee, and then our administrators continue to work with the design team as well on some of the intricacies associated with security, the schematic design of the education spaces, some of the sustainability goals was also discussed by the building committee. And then, the interior finishes, the flooring and the walls have also, we were also in the early stages of discussion with the design team on those areas. So, lots going on. It's at an exciting stage, and they're really starting to pin down that schematic design so that the project can go out to bid later on this year. And so, that will be, again, in a position hopefully to ask the voters to consider funding the full project in the fall of '25. So, but those are just some of the slides from the February 12th meeting of the school building committee. I thought I'd share them with this committee for your consideration.
Thank you.
That's it.
Any thoughts, feedback, or questions from anyone?
The only thing I would ask is just kind of repeat for the audience, just in case somebody watches, if they want to get involved or be a part of the process, what do they do?
Great. Great question. So, we meet, the building committee meets the second Wednesday of each month. There is communication and contact information on our website. We also post all the slide decks and all the links to the meeting videos on our website as well. But if anyone wants to be in touch with the administrators or the school building committee, certainly, our website would offer contact information. So, we'll start to, you know, it's been, the design team has been kind of quietly working through December and January, and as we start to make these, you know, important decisions, I do think we need to sort of begin to re-engage and reconnect with the community on our progress here. So, we'll be sure to do that.
Other questions or thoughts? On a similar vein, we're headed into new business related to Center School, doors and windows, and an SOI related to that.
Yes. So, we have, the MSBA has a core program and an accelerated repair program. Our middle school is part of the MSBA's core program. We are also, we had also last year received an invitation from the MSBA to enter into their accelerated repair program to repair or replace the roof at Center School. And so, that is ongoing. For your consideration, tonight is a statement of interest to the MSBA into their accelerated repair program to address the windows at Center School. They are, they have just become eligible to be considered for MSBA's, the MSBA's grant program under their accelerated repair program. It's, the reason it's called an accelerated repair program is that it targets certain building components, either roofs, windows, boilers. In this case, there's an interest by the select board, by the town manager, and by us administratively to request MSBA support for, to address the windows at Center School. They are sort of at the end of their useful life. They're 30 years old. If they were in any of our homes, we'd be looking to replace them with something more manageable, more energy efficient, and certainly, it will help with the, you know, the climate of that building, the energy efficiency of that building, the overall environmental quality, air quality of that building as well. So, for your consideration is a statement of interest to the MSBA for the windows at Center School, and there is some very specific language on your annotated agenda that would need to be part of your motion if the project is of interest.
All right. Questions related to this and/or possible motions?
Why wouldn't we do that? I don't.
It's a no-brainer, I'd say. Yeah. It, you know, it's a way to take care of the buildings before they get to, before the whole building gets to the end of its useful life. And I think at Center School in particular, protecting the envelope of that building via the roof and the windows is really critically important at this point. And the MSBA would be, would participate in funding, you know, up to 50% of eligible costs. So.
I've always thought the windows have been an issue in the past.
Yeah.
Recently, even.
So, the draft statement of interest is in your meeting packet. It needs, there's a few items frankly in the application that need to be finalized, but probably 95% done, and all the critical information is there for you.
Okay.
All right.
Should we send a motion?
Yes, please.
This whole motion?
Yes.
Lord, help us.
Having convened in an open meeting on February 25th, 2025, prior to the SOI submission closing date, the school committee of the town of Long Meadow, in accordance with the chapter bylaws and ordinances, has voted to authorize a superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the statement of interest form dated March 14th, 2025, for the Center School located at 837 Long Meadow Street, which describes and explains the following deficiencies in the prior categories, for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future. Five, replacement, renovation, or modernization of school facility systems as roofs, windows, boilers, heating, ventilation systems to increase energy conservation and decrease energy-related costs in a school facility. This statement of interest is specifically intended for the replacement of windows and doors at Center School in Long Meadow, and hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting the statement of interest form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or approval of an application, the awarding of a grant or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, or commits the Long Meadow School District to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority.
Thank you, Jamie. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion related to this? All right. Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. Jamie?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
And yes for me as well. Thank you all for putting this together, and fingers crossed that we can get some state support on the windows at Center School. All right. Next up is other new business, consideration for admission of an international exchange student.
Sure. You have a memo in your packet from high school principal Tom Landers recommending the acceptance of a foreign exchange student under your non-resident student policy. The policy is included in your packet. Essentially, in that memo, Mr. Landers attests to the fact that the admission of the foreign exchange student would meet all of your policy requirements, some of which are that the student needs to come to us through an approved and accredited international exchange organization. We have to attest to the school committee that there is sufficient space, that the transcript of the exchange student is acceptable, that housing has been secured, and that the student would not be pursuing a degree or diploma here at Long Meadow High School. So, those are some of the requirements of your policy, and Mr. Landers has submitted a memo to attest that all of those requirements have been met. So, it has my recommendation as well. Exchange students tend to enhance the life of Long Meadow High and our student body. We're allowed by policy to take up to six. Typically, you know, we have one a year, sometimes two, but this is the first one that we've received for the '25, '26 school year.
All right. Any questions related to this? Seeing none, I'll accept a motion.
Is this a misprint in here, or is it A, N, and B?
No, that's the acronym. I couldn't tell you what it stands, what A and B stands for.
Okay.
But it is, it's on the list of accredited foreign exchange programs.
Okay.
I move the school committee approve the request for an A, N, B education, Italian international exchange student attend grade 12 without the expectation of an LHS diploma at Long Meadow High School for the 2025, 2026 school year.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Michaela. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. Jamie?
Yes.
Thank you. Michaela?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
And yes for me as well. Welcome to Irene Fiore. We hope you have a lovely year here, and thank you to the Dominic family for hosting. All right. That brings us to our agenda item, last of the new business, on staff and community feedback on cell phones in schools.
All right. Well, this should be exciting and interesting. We had issued surveys to parent caregivers and the staff as well about the use of cell phones in schools, and when I say cell phones, really, the survey was meant to sort of broadly ask for feedback on the use of personal mobile communication devices. So, that could include cell phones, it could include smartwatches, et cetera. So, I'll just share some of the qualitative feedback that we received that totally reflects the quantitative feedback that we received as well. I'd say, for starters, that the feedback was mixed, that there really didn't seem to be, you know, any strong consensus that emerged in terms of, you know, how strict or not strict our cellphone practices should be. But let me start with sort of the end in mind, in terms of our next steps with regard to cell phones. I think we still have some continued work to do on stakeholder engagement. I expect that we will bring to the committee some handbook language that is clearer and more explicit and understandable for everyone. Generally speaking, there was support in the survey for stricter limits across the board. One of the things, where there was very consistent feedback from staff and parents was around enforcement. Our own staff reported to us, and our families reported to us, that they wanted to make sure that, whatever our expectations are, that they are strictly and consistently enforced from classroom to classroom to classroom, and so that, you know, it really jams up kids and teachers and creates some confusion when classroom A has different expectations than classroom B. And so, I think there's sort of this sense that we just need to make sure that we're all on the same page on this issue. I think the survey yielded, really pointed us towards a social norms campaign. I borrow that phrase from the work of our close community, which is really just, you know, really engaging in education with staff and students and parents around appropriate use of cell phones and the effect that excessive use or inappropriate use of cell phones can have. We also saw from the survey some strong feedback that there ought to be a tiered approach, that what makes sense at K5 might not make sense at 6'8", might not make sense at 9'12". There was, I think one of the things we need to tease out still is sort of addressing safety and emergency concerns and questions, so that if we do put some restrictions in place on cell phones, we want to make sure that everyone understands that we can do that in a way that doesn't compromise student safety, because some of the feedback that we got back, the parents said that they want to make sure that their children, and the upper grades at least, have access to cell phones in the event of a school emergency. So, if we have some restrictions in place... So if we have some restrictions in place, then we, we have to, you know, be, be mindful of that concern. Balancing restrictions and responsible use. So for every parent that said we ought to have, you know, the staff member that said we ought to have the strongest restrictions possible on cell phones, there was probably an equal number of parents who said we need to teach children how to use cell phones responsibly. And so that's one of, one of the things that we're trying to balance. Digital literacy, I think, you know, we have some good foundational practice in place around teaching kids appropriate and safe behavior online and with cell phones, probably some additional room for improvement there. And then I think I'd like to engage our students in a survey before we put anything in place. Make sure we get some feedback from our students. Maybe that's something I can talk to Andrew about how we could go about that. But some of the, so I'll, I'll run through some of the, the feedback that we received. Much of this speaks for itself. I'm, I'm going to credit AI for helping me sift through the hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of open responses that we receive from staff and from parents. So divided opinions. Some arguing strongly for complete bans, others suggesting that complete bans are ineffective and unrealistic. Definitely agreement that cell phones are a distraction in academic settings. That was, that was one of the things that we consistently heard, no surprise, I suppose. And students tending to be one step ahead of us, whatever practices, rules, restrictions we put in place, we have to be mindful that students can find some ways to creatively avoid those expectations. Emphasis on, on teaching responsible use. So we mentioned that. Safety concerns, this was something we heard. Parents and educators emphasizing that students should have access to their phones in the emergencies. But there's also an understanding from parents and staff, certainly from staff, that if there's an emergency, we have mechanisms in place to allow for kids to reach out to and contact their families. I mean, schools existed for decades and decades without cell phones. And so we, you know, I think one of the things that, that came out is we really need to spend some time educating parents about reaching out to their children during the school day. Because that can be, that can be disruptive and age-based policies, I think that definitely jumped off the page. Broad agreement that elementary students do not need phones or smartwatches during the school day. So I think we'll have some tight language for you on that. Limited phone access for middle school and high schools. I, I think though, really at the middle school level, I think what came out for me and from staff and from families was, was off in a way. There is a question at the middle level whether or not we would have cellphone hotels or the shoe racks in classrooms. One of the things we heard back was that, you know, if students at the middle level are, and even high school level are constantly putting those cell phones back and forth from their bag into a cellphone hotel or a cellphone tree, or in some drawer that the, that the teacher has, they're always engaging with their phones and it might be better just to have them off in a way so that there's not that temptation between classes to look at their devices. Uniform and enforceable policy, you mentioned that. Clear and consistent policy. I think that really jumped out at all of us that we, we just need to be clear on, on what our expectations are. Lots of references to Jonathan Haidt's book, The Anxious Generation, which is, really has some startling commentary on, on how damaging cell phones are to young people and adults. And smartwatches, as limited functionality is a compromise, I'm, I'm not sure that that represents a compromise. We didn't get a lot of folks saying that. But certainly we're seeing kids even at as early as fourth and fifth grade with smartwatches, and I think we need some clear expectations there. Parental perspective. Many parents emphasizing their interest in, in contacting their children. Others believing that schools can handle that communication. So again, really, really mixed opinions on, on so many questions. We, we just saw a real even distribution of, of thought on some of the questions. Staff responses, you know, certainly the distraction piece. Concern about students sort of quote sneaking their phones, you know, in the restrooms, in the hallways. Certainly not necessary for learning, even if some suggested they might have some benefits, certainly not necessary. But it was encouraging, interesting to hear our staff say that current enforcement is inconsistent and, and we just need to have clear expectations at the administrative level, at the classroom level. Clear policies, consistently enforced. Again, some of the, the same comments being echoed here. Strict, some favoring strict off and away, some suggesting a tiered approach with more autonomy at the high school. Lots of concern about student well-being and social development, the concerns about sort of the, the dopamine effect that cell phones give students and sort of ensuring that we're teaching kids to self-regulate in other ways and candidly, staff worrying about students receiving unnecessary texts from home throughout the day. Definitely interested among our teachers in, in teaching responsible cellphone use and encouraging common expectations. I think we all felt that, staff felt pretty clearly that emergency communication could go through school staff. We have some quantitative data that I could share with you if you're interested on, on what people's opinions look like in some of these areas. Generally, staff reporting that they saw cell phones as having limited educational use, which is interesting because if we, we rewound the clock about ten years in education, there was sort of this bring your own device approach in education, and I feel like the pendulum has swung away from that. And it's more about reliance on school-issued Chromebooks. Teachers reporting that policing phone use is, takes away time from instruction. And again, echoing that consistent enforcement. And even our staff or administrators, you know, letting ourselves know that we also have to model appropriate phone use. So lots of great feedback. Like I said, I have piles of quantitative data that I could share with the committee if you're interested as well, but the quantitative data really mirrors kind of what we see in the qualitative open responses. So no cellphone survey is perfect, but it gives us some idea of what the sentiment of the community and our staff is. And we're at the early stages. I think what I'd like to do is pull together a group of parents and some students to look at the data and really start to hone in on what our practice should be. So I'd anticipate bringing a recommendation to the committee sometime in the spring and obviously open to any feedback or expectations that the committee has on this topic. It's a, it's a hot topic in education. The, the state attorney general has just issued some guidance on this, on how school districts can address cellphone use. It doesn't offer a prescription, it just offers some general strategies. And there's also some legislation pending that would ban cell phones from schools. I don't know where that's headed in the state of Massachusetts, but we'll keep our eyes on that too. So. So anyways, early stages, just wanted to kind of, I know this is, was important to the committee that you had some expectations that we, that we review this and, and happy to bring you back any additional information or if you have any thoughts on, on where you'd like to see us go with our handbook language. Happy to feed that back to our stakeholder groups.
Who do you see as being part of the stakeholder groups? Do you already have some in place?
Yeah, thank you. We, we did, the, the committee did receive a series of emails from some parents. I guess it was last spring, towards the end of the last school year. I'd like to reach back out to that group and invite them in to take a look at and just have a conversation about the data and where we could go with this. I think I could also ask our principals to run it by school councils because ultimately, school councils are responsible for handbook language, especially at the high school level. So I'd want to cycle it through the school councils as well. And we have faculty advisory groups that we could cycle this information through additionally. So. But if you had any other?
No, I'm just thinking, working backwards. So if we're hoping to have perhaps, perhaps policies in place to support handbook language, then ideally maybe those stakeholder groups getting going by mid-March, late March-ish so that between the handbook committees and student councils and school-based groups, we can be working together towards coming up with recommendations that can then get into handbooks and over to policy sub with enough time to come to a meeting and go through some public readings of possible policies and discussion related to them before we hit the end of the school year so that then we have policies in place and handbook changes in place for the beginning of the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. So just kind of working back from that would be sort of my, my thoughts related to timing.
That makes sense.
And on your, whenever you were saying they were, so the staff you were saying was split fifty-fifty, whether they should allow?
It, it was more, it was more across the spectrum of opinion. It wasn't necessarily a fifty-fifty thing. It was sort of, and it depended on the question, but many of the questions, it was twenty percent, twenty percent, twenty percent, twenty percent. And it was, you know, some who favored, you know, probably twenty percent who said strict ban, you know, just don't want to see it off and away, you know, can never surface during the school day. To those who would say, well, these are seventeen, sometimes eighteen-year-old young people who need to manage these devices in responsible ways. So, you know, it was kind of a mixed opinion really, even with the staff. So the, the staff.
Remind me on the staffing, I obviously can see the staffing one a bit, you know, and like there had to be a question like, does it impact you educating the students with the students in there? Are you in favor of them not having it? And I'm assuming it's got to be close to a hundred percent.
Yeah, I, I, that's fair. I think our, our staff reported that they are disruptive to, and they were in agreement widely that they're disruptive to.
And I think every parent on this study, if you asked them that, they would say a hundred percent. It's, it's disruptive to helping my child.
Yeah.
It is. Like at, at home, it's disruptive, right? And, and most of the parents are worse than the kids, right? It's just, it's just, it's true. Like, you know, so like you look at all this, but like I think we got to like step back to whenever we're in these focus groups and going, what is, I get that everybody wants to have the cellphone, everybody's worried about safety. But exactly what you said, we went forty, fifty years with safety. There's people in this building if you, that I fully trust to take care of my child and make the right decision at the moment, like whether it's health, whether it's safety, whatever it is, and then they're going to contact us. So I mean, you're, you're going to get there as quick as you're going to get there, whether it's the child calling or you calling me, go and get here now. So it's kind of, I don't know, I find that one just very odd. I think it's just a scapegoat. And I do think that parents are actively texting their child all day long, right? And how is that helping to educate your child? And, you know, and you're taking away from your child and then you're disrupting. So my issue as a parent, and that's why I think we should like have, so is you're doing this to your child, you're taking away from my child's education because you're disrupting that teacher. And that teacher's supposed to be teaching my child too, right? So it's not a my child issue with it. It's a whole we problem.
Yeah.
And the whole we problem is getting caused by like, you know, so, you know, and almost, you know, saying to a parent, how many times you, okay, yeah, I texted my kid twenty times today while he was in school, you know, guess what? He's supposed to be being educated, not texting with you because you wanted to talk about something else. So, you know, I think, I think your tiered approach too is something like K through five, I don't know.
There's really no role.
Six through eight. Tell me the role. I don't understand why six, six through eighth grader needs either. High school, you can debate it. I mean, but even, even at high school, you know, you know, kind of coming back to like the and I think you accent it well, is like, it's really confusing. Policies aren't really clear. So clarifying that, I think is going to help us really kind of understand where we're going with it. But I think you got to come back to what is our, what is our job? Educate kids. Does the cellphone help educate the child? And you got to answer that question. Don't forget about safety and everything else. Did that help educate my child? Yes or no? And most people are going to say no. And I'm going, are you, your kid using their phone in school, is it messing up my child's education? And my answer will be, yes, it is, because it's disrupting things. You know, it's one thing to say, oh, I'm coordinating with my kid after school. Well, you don't need to do that all eight hours or six hours if they're in school. So there's got to be some balancing act here and kind of solidifying what, what we're doing going forward. And maybe taking away isn't fair either. But the way it is right now, it's very loosey-goosey.
And I think the clear expectations part and the clear approaches part, it extends to what's happening here during the school day, but even our messaging to families, you know, we just want to be, be clear on what our expectations are.
And I think that's fair, you know, and I think it would be fair for the teachers too, because I would be, I, I get it. You go from one classroom to another and it's very differing politicians going, what is, like, what, you know, it's almost like speeding. Like, okay, over here I'm allowed to go ninety miles an hour, but over here I get to go seventy because those guys are a little bit worse. They're going to pull me over and give me a ticket. Like be fair about it and kind of understand what, what, what you're supposed to be doing and not doing. So I think it's reasonable.
Yeah, I do think different age levels matter as well. I would agree with you about K through five. Six through eight, I think, makes a strong case for either off and away or in a pouch. I, I tend to be more agreeable on the idea that there should be more discussion at the high school level. I do think that it is good for all of us as a community to help teach children how to use phones correctly, whether that's through modeling or use, et cetera. I, I also feel at the high school level, as a parent, I never minded quite as much that some teachers had different rules from others. I feel like that's good practice for my kids to understand that different spaces have different rules of the road and it's good for you to learn to follow those rules, whatever they might be in whatever space you're in. So the uniformity piece doesn't concern me quite as much at the high school level. I, I agree that they are a significant distraction. And I liked that some of the educators pointed out their concerns about the lunchroom piece. I do think that that's a factor as well for some students to know that maybe that can be more of a cellphone-free space or at least a cellphone-free for certain space areas or times. To encourage more face-to-face conversation is really important. That is an absolute challenge. They are very addictive. It is good for students to have a little bit more of the face-to-face. I think that's shifted as time's gone by. Michaela, and I think I saw it here in too, Andrew, yep.
I, I totally agree with everything Jamie and Nicole just said, and I think the tiered approach is a really great way to handle the kind of discrepancy from people who really want their kids to have devices and those that don't. But just something that stuck out to me was the, the staff and saying like they want to model good behavior with devices and that, that sort of alarmed me because, I mean, I think an educator should never be on their devices when they're teaching. I can send you a screenshot of my four hundred and fourteen missed text messages. I'm never on my phone when I am teaching and, and yeah, that can be stressful, but I think that it's really important to make that space only right then, there's nothing else going on. Obviously, I live in the early elementary years, so I don't have as much insight to the other grades, but also from a safety standpoint, I think about if all of the kids in my class had devices and something happened, I feel like it would be a lot harder for me to follow through with the routines and procedures of my safety. I have to get these kids out for certain things, a drill or whatever it is, like I, I have to take care of them. If they all have devices and their first instinct was to reach out to their person, their family, and I didn't have that control of like this is what we need to do and this is what we have to do now, that would be a lot more stressful and that's something that I think needs to be considered too.
Yeah, I, I would agree with that. In an emergency, I need eyes on me so that we know what we're doing, not eyes down looking at phones. It's an, it's an emergency.
Even at the high school.
Focus. Oh, yeah, that's across all grids.
If we're in here and you're telling us what to do and he's over there, his dad tells him to go do something else, that's a problem, you know?
Yeah.
Like, that is the negative side of these devices is you don't know the situation. If you're in here, you, you're going to make the best decision for all of our families, you know, and so having every other family is going to come, come up with their own idea of what to do, that's where I think it creates an unsafe. That's where I think it creates an unsafe environment. Personally, I think it's more unsafe across the board, because guess what high school kids can do? They can actually act and do something that, you know, maybe puts everybody else in danger. Like, oh, go, you know, go, like what, what are you going to hear from what parent? Each parent's going to give a little bit of different advice.
Yeah.
But they're not in that situation, they're just freaking out because their kid is somewhere where they don't want them to be.
Yeah.
You know? I, I think it creates, it makes it, like, what are the police even, I don't even know what, you know, that, that side of this, as we bring this in, we should bring, they should be a stakeholder as well, is, you know, what, from a safety standpoint, does it make you safer?
Yeah.
It makes you feel better, because you can talk to your kid at some point.
Yeah, they, they, we've had our district safety meetings and occasionally our law enforcement partners have mentioned that, that they worry about the effects of, you know, hundreds and hundreds of cellphone messages going out. And so they actually have plans, you know, how they would cordon off a school in the event of a, of a safety situation and because they know that there would be many families that would be rushing to the school because of that cellphone communication.
Yeah. Andrew, I'll give you a chance to-
So I can save all the policy nitty-gritty for later, I just want to get across what I think needs to be said right now. I think the really key thing we need to focus on here when it comes to the student aspect of this is communication with students. Making sure that, not necessarily that they're to be involved in like a parent focus group, I think there should be student focus groups, I think that's something we can talk about later down the line. But making sure that every email that goes out to parents about this goes out to students. And I think that is important for a variety of reasons, but I think the most important one is that if an email goes out to parents that, you know, phones have been banned at the elementary level, obviously, that is going to get misconstrued and it's going to, within like 10 minutes is going to be at the high school of kids thinking that there's an overall ban across the district. So I think if we're being strategic with this and we're communicating with students directly on every step of the way, just a simple email or Google Classroom, Post Room Teachers, et cetera, then I think this will make this a much easier process to make sure that students feel informed. They may not agree with it, but I think it's going to sort of lower the tone a lot less and it will make things a lot less chaotic in terms of how we're going about this, because this is a very interesting issue, I think, for students. And I think most students would agree that phones actually are disruptive in the classroom. They just want to feel like they're part of the conversation, they don't want this to feel like this is like something just that the higher-ups are dealing with, especially when, with all due respect, the higher-ups weren't really, they weren't in the classroom when phones were involved. And I think some people feel, I think a lot of students feel that they, there's a lack of understanding in terms of how phones are used. I think a lot of the times that can be negative, but I think there are some reasons that phones are positive that some adults may not understand. So I think, once again, just communication, 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 and that will just make this a lot easier for high school students to sort of understand. And then I think in terms of cafeteria stuff, because I think this is important to get across now, I think at the high school level, you don't see as much of students just on their phones constantly in the cafeteria. I will say though, I think I, when I was in middle school, you had, you had to have your phone completely off and away at Glenn Brook throughout the day, and I do think that helped to foster better conversations in the, in the classroom and in the cafeteria, because we weren't just on our phones the entire time, especially when you're developing or as a tween rather than in high school. Where I think the, a better way to go about this at the high school would be as, at lunch is to kind of allow for maybe to have lunch be a little bit more of a space with leniency where students can communicate with their parents, especially when we're talking about it disrupting classroom learning, then okay, you give students 30 minutes right now to talk to your parent about whether, you know, what the plan is for after school. I think that's kind of maybe a better way to look at this, because I think when we're talking about social development, I don't think that affects high schoolers quite as much. I'm not, hasn't formed the medical research of it all, but from my experience. So that's just what I want to get across tonight. I think there's a lot more I have to say on this, but just sort of my initial thoughts in terms of how we go forward.
That's very thoughtful, thank you, Andrew.
Very thoughtful.
I appreciate the perspective on that, because I think it is important to remember that students are stakeholders as well. And it can be easy for us to maybe think that we already know exactly what all the teenagers in our lives might say about this and exactly where they would fall, but that's not necessarily true. I think that students have a lot of thoughtful ideas about cellphone usage, particularly at that high school level. And, and as a high school teacher myself, I think it's good to engage as much as we can with students and work together. So I do like the idea of a student focus group that could maybe help figure out like what makes the most sense at the high school for supporting learning and supporting safety and also social development, while also remembering that we're dealing with older students who might have some slightly different needs than our younger students do.
Andrew, you and I maybe can connect with Mrs. Drowick and Mr. Landers and about what next steps would be to engage students on this.
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah, excellent, yeah. And, and just very, very briefly, in case anybody's wondering, right now, elementary, they're, they're not permitted. Middle school, it's off and away. And then the high school, it's during unstructured, unassigned times that the students are allowed to use their phones, provided it's not disruptive, so. And then with, the only other exception would be at the high school, currently is sort of with explicit teacher permission, if the teacher sees some academic reason for students to do something on their phones, so. So that's the current status, but I think clear communication, clear expectations, more engagement with families on this, about what our, you know, what, what we see, what students see as the impacts, the effects of cell phones in, in schools. Appreciate the chance to give you a first look at, at some of the feedback we received.
Any last comments or thoughts related to this? All right, seeing none, we have one final possible recommended motion to round us out for this evening.
I move that school committee meet in executive session, pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Purpose Two, to conduct a strategy session in preparation with collective bargaining units A, B, C, D, E, F, and H, and Purpose Seven, consideration of release of executive session minutes of previous meetings, not to reconvene into open session.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Do we have a second?
Thank you very much. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. Jamie?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
And yes for me as well, thank you very much. Reminder, we'll see everybody again for March 10th for the budget and then March 11th for our next school committee meeting. Thank you, good night.